Okay. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for June 20th, 2017. Invite you to stand if you choose while we have the invocation tonight by Fire Department Chaplain, Ryan Meredith. Mr. Meredith, would you come in and pray for us, please, sir?
Let's pray. Father, Lord, we thank you for today and all the blessings that you bestow on us, Lord, and the grace and mercy that you give. Lord, I pray for tonight and the commission meeting, Father, that you would be with the commissioners and our mayor, that you would watch over them, that you would give them guidance and direction, Father, that would further the, our city and the community within it, Lord. We pray all this in your name. Amen.
King will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, under awards and recognitions, we have a very special presentation tonight.
Call the roll.
Pardon?
Can I call the roll?
Oh, sure. Good. Go ahead.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Denning.
Here.
Commissioner Nash.
Here.
Commissioner Paragon.
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Yes.
All right.
So distracted by our new visitor tonight here, Ms. Kim Lancaster has a presentation to make and look forward to hearing it.
The gun there. I'm here today. We did a photo contest recently called "We Are Bowling Green." It was our inaugural year for doing this. We're hoping to make this an annual event. And what we did was we requested photos from people in and around the Bowling Green area, and we asked them to submit photos to us for what they felt Bowling Green was. And it could be anything. It could be people, it could be places, and we've got a wide variety of entries that we received. Fountain Square Park, a lot of aerial views, some of people, some of children, animals. A white squirrel was one of them that we got. And so, we got a lot of different things in. In total, we had 55 entries that we received. And what we did was we broke that down into a couple of different ways that we had some winners. And we had a panel of six judges, and they voted on the photos. And we had a first, second, and third place, and each one of those will receive a certificate and a gift card from us to B&amp;H Photos so that they can hopefully further some photography and their interests there. And then we also did an online survey, and we had a People's Choice Award. And we received over 600 votes on that online survey. And so, we did a first place in that as well. So what I would like to do tonight is to recognize, we have three of the four winners here with us tonight, and to recognize them and the work that they did, and get them their certificate and their gift card. And so, first, what I would like to do is ask Jason Doherty, please, to come up here. Jason was our first-place winner, and his photo is Bowling Green Water Tower, and it's the one on the left over there. And...
And the people who are here from BGMU, they appreciate the water tower.
And so, Jason, this is for you.
Thank you.
And your gift card.
Annual report, right?
And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Kim, just a second. Mark, when we say we want the water tower painted, that's not what we were talking about. Give it.
Okay. Our second-place winner, voted on by our judges, is Brandy Olshwager, and she is here with us tonight as well. Her photo is called Kentucky Sunset, and it is the picture on the right there of the horse and the sunset behind it. And so, Brandy, this is for you. And...
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. I appreciate it.
Kim, where was the picture taken of the horse?
Brandy, where was that?
That was actually in our backyard. Our neighbors have four or five horses that they have all the time, so...
That's good.
Great.
Our third-place winner is not able to be here this evening. His name is Barry Frias, and his print was "The Capitol Arts Bringing Color to the Night." And he was our third-place winner, and so, we have mailed Barry his information, but we thank him as well for participating. And then, our People's Choice Award, as I said, with over 600 votes in total, and 20.69% of the vote went to Ms. Debbie Ritchie for "Lost River After a Spring Shower." And you can see that we've got a blue hole down there. And Debbie?
Thank you so much.
This is for you. Thank you. And so, like I said, we're hoping that this contest can grow every year. We are looking in the future to possibly use these photos in the annual report and be able to populate it with photos from our citizens, from what they think Bowling Green means to them, and different areas of Bowling Green. So that's kind of what we're looking to do in the future, and we really appreciate all the entries, everyone who took time to vote, and all of our judges who helped us out this year. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Kim, for taking this project on. Do we have any other awards or recognitions tonight, mister?
I do not, Mayor.
You have comments for us?
Yeah, there'll be a need for executive session. Kate will read the reason. Kate?
Pursuant to KRS 618101C for discussions of proposed pending litigation against your on behalf of the city.
Second.
Nash, second. By Williams, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Got another item, sir?
Oh, yes. Sorry. As the commission knows, we received probably the first time ever in Gene's memory, a recommendation from the planning commission about a rezoning that had no yes or no to the recommendation. We thought it important enough to not automatically put it on the agenda, but let you deliberate about its importance and what you wanted to do. Gene is here to go over the various options that you have. I think there was a memo sent to you all that outlined various options you may want to take. I think Ben is here from the planning commission. So maybe Gene can take you around the field quickly, then you can start questions.
Quickly, I don't want to go over the whole email again or the memo I sent out. This was at 1318 Nutwood. The proposal was to rezone it from RM3 to RM4. I understand, and Ben is here to correct me if he needs to. Then, under the RM3, they limited the two dwelling units to RM4, would allow it up to four. As Kevin said, for the first time in my memory, the tie vote, four to four, was made at the planning commission. I think they were asking that night if they wanted to reconsider and vote again, or just submit it, and their recommendations was to submit it to the board of commissioners without a recommendation. So therefore, normally, you always wear, we've got a recommendation with an ordinance approving or denying. That one, we don't have tonight. So that's going to leave it now up to the board here to decide how you want to handle this one. At that night, Ben Peterson presented a staff report to the planning commission. There's only basically one comment at that hearing. One of the commissioners commented that this was similar to the Cherry Way application that came up just before this one. At that night, they concerned a relatively small lot. There were no public comments for or against this rezoning. But after that, again, the tie vote came up four to four, and that's where we are tonight. Again, as we always say several times, it's up to the board of commissioners to make the final decision. The planning commission normally only makes recommendations. In this situation, they did not do that. So there's a couple of options up for, maybe two or three options up for the board of commissioners. One, you can simply do nothing. 90 days after final action of the planning commission, this rezoning will go, in this situation, will go nowhere because it was not denied, it was not approved. So after 90 days, there will be no decision made on this rezoning at all. If that case, the applicants do have to wait a year to go back for the planning commission if they choose to do that. Or you can go ahead and make a decision, obviously, if you choose to do that based on the, well, on two or three things. You can do it based on the record made before the planning commission if you want to do that. Traditionally, for, what, years and years, that's what this body has always done. It's made a decision based on the record before the planning commission. You know, if you choose to, certainly, you can always choose to have another blown full hearing yourself. We've not done one of those, gosh, I'm not too sure I remember the last time we did one of those. And makes it kind of odd on this one because, like I said, there was no opposition, at least that night at the hearing. You can also make your decision based on the record before the planning commission with an argument-type hearing if you can. Kind of, again, it's kind of unusual to do an argument because nobody spoke before the planning commission. And I'll give you the same thought process we've done before. If you're going to make a decision based upon a record before the planning commission, you need to base it just on that record, which means the planning commission staff, the application made to the planning commission, and allow people to speak before you who also spoke at the planning commission. But there was nobody who spoke before the planning commission. So maybe that kind of limits your ability to even have that one. But what you can also do, you can also make a decision just based upon the record before the planning commission. You can do that tonight. You've already got the staff report, you've got their minutes. Ben, if you choose to, Ben can come forward and summarize what he addressed to the planning commission that night. We do have prepared two ordinances for you, one denying the rezoning and one approving the rezoning. Either way you do, you've got the ability to look to see whether, in your opinion, this rezoning complies with the comprehensive plan. You can look at issues like, is this rezoning compatible with the neighborhood, or what kind of impact this may have on the neighborhood. But again, I guess the two major ways, at least probably the best ways, is either, what, do nothing for the next 90 days and let it go, or if you choose to, go ahead here tonight, or if you want to, put off the next meeting, whichever one you want to do, but to actually make a decision based upon the record before the planning commission. Again, may I let Ben address and give you some of his comments that he made that night?
What we need from here is a decision to add it to the agenda to discuss, or just let it go?
Well, I think we probably need to add it to the agenda. The problem is, is what ordinance do we add to the agenda? We can always add, this is a regular meeting, so you can add to the agenda just a discussion. After that, you can have Ben make his presentation, and then, once that's done, any member here can make a motion to add to the agenda either the ordinance to approve or the ordinance to deny.
Just add it to the agenda to discuss?
Yes. I think you've got to do, this is a regular scheduled meeting, so I think you can add an item to the agenda just to discuss this one, unless, you know, you've already got your decision that you think is appropriate, and you want to go ahead and make a motion to either approve or deny. But I don't know if you want to do that prior to hearing from Ben and having some discussion among yourself or not.
On the agenda, there is already the option for the discussion. That's kind of where we're at at the moment. I know it's under City Manager Comment, but it does say to discuss this particular rezoning. So you don't have to add a discussion if you don't want to. You can just continue the discussion at the end of the agenda if you'd like, and move forward with the other items. Or you could, as Gene mentioned, just add an ordinance, one or the other, and then discuss it at that point. And you either vote up or vote down whichever particular ordinance.
That doesn't give us any time for reviewing or discussion, does it? I mean...
If we add it to the end of the session, we can discuss it and then make the decision then about whether or not to add a pro or a con.
Yes.
Ordinance to it. Correct.
But we have to make the decision of a pro or a con tonight?
No. Okay.
That was my question. That's what I was asking.
You don't have to make a decision tonight. If all you want to do is just discuss it, that's already on the agenda, but you can postpone your discussion, your complete discussion, until the end of the rest of the items if you'd like. But discussion is already listed on the agenda.
Or, like I said, you can discuss tonight, and then one of you can tell us. If you want to add it to the next agenda, which ordinance you want to add to the next agenda, it'd be fine. You just have 90 days from final action of the planning commission, which was, what, May the 18th? Well, I'm not sure that statute's kind of odd. But you've got 90 days from final decision of the planning commission to take action.
Could they discuss right now?
Yes.
And then vote later?
Yes.
Instead of waiting?
Yes.
Okay. Readings?
Some second readings.
Go ahead and talk about it now, then, and we'll decide whether or not to add it to the agenda?
That'd be my preference.
Okay. Ben, would you come up and give us a brief summary of, we have the minutes of the meeting, and you can count on us to have read that and be familiar with them?
Sure. I think Gene summarized all the options perfectly, as well as kind of the culmination of what was stated at the, or in this case, maybe not stated, at the planning commission public hearing. As far as opposition goes, there was no, there was no public comment for this particular application. We had the staff presentation, and that was a short discussion by the planning commission. I think some of the comments, as Gene mentioned, were related to the previous application. But if you look at the staff report, which I believe you have in front of you, you'll see most of the information there. But just looking at the staff analysis portion, the current zoning of the property is RM3. It would allow one duplex to be on the property. If the applicant was requesting to rezone to RM4, which allow four units, there is, I believe, a concept plan attached as well. Well, there wasn't with this one, it was the other one. But they wanted to build two duplex on one lot, so a total of four units. So that is ultimately the, I guess, the request. Again, the staff report talks about many other details, which I don't want to go into unless you would like me to. But one of the key things is the future land use map designation, and that is mixed-use residential, which allows for mixed-use areas. We're taking as a whole, primary land use is residential. It does allow a variety of housing types and densities, but balanced by complementary retail office or other civic uses. So it does fit, the proposal did fit within that, but as Gene also alluded to, there is the compatibility test as well. So first step is, does it meet the future land use map and the category? It does in this case. Then the second test is then the compatibility, and that's usually always where the questions come in.
Looks like it goes across different lot lines. Is this consolidated?
It does. They're not consolidated at this time. Typically, what we'll have in these cases is they'll ask for the rezoning first, before then they expend the extra engineering monies, plating monies, to then consolidate the lot lines and then do the development.
Telling me that RM3 on those four lot lines behind it, there could be a duplex on each one of those?
No. If you just, inside that yellow box, essentially, they would be two separate structures on the lot. Each would be two units apiece for a total of four units and two separate structures in just on that yellow.
Current zoning, are those 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 lots that you're dealing with?
Yes.
So you could have a duplex on each of those six lots currently?
No. Currently, those lots are extremely small lots. They were plotted many, many, many years ago. I think they probably had shotgun, they were probably done for the old shotgun-style houses, which were very small. But currently, you would only be able to allow one unit on each one of those lots due to the maximum allowable lot area. Just because you're zoned RM3 doesn't necessarily mean you automatically get three units or two units. It's based off of the lot size and the lot area as well.
Where's the...
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Where's the parking plan for this?
Parking, so at this stage, they're just asking really about the land use and the change for the use. So the two duplexes that are proposed would then have to have two, by the zoning ordinance then, would be, have to have two parking spaces per unit. So it'd be 2, 4, 6, 8 parking spaces. So that's what is required by the zoning ordinance. Right now, they're just asking to be able to change the zone, to be able to put the, develop that land with those four units on there, and then they would have to address all those zoning ordinance requirements at the time they're getting ready to have their building permit.
And how many bedrooms are each one of these being proposed?
That's kind of central around some of the argument of that previous application we discussed, so I don't want to delve too much into that unless we need to. But the number of bedrooms is open. So a duplex, under a current zoning ordinance, doesn't, the parking requirement's just based on a duplex. All the other multifamily styles that we allow in this community are bedroom-based parking requirements. So if the duplex is one bedroom or 10 bedrooms, you still only have to have two parking spaces per unit by our current standard. So some of the argument that was central around the previous application, the one that came before this one, that same planning commission night, was the, the comment was made by some opposition that what these developers are doing is they're not renting these by the unit, they're renting them by the bedroom. And so, where that gets tricky is in the definition of a family. So two units, you would allow one family in each unit. So that, the definition of family is no more than two unrelated people in one location. So by renting by the bedroom, let's say you had three bedrooms, for example, and you had three unrelated people in one unit renting those three separate bedrooms, that would become a violation of the zoning ordinance. So that kind of, that determination comes later, once the ordinance is violated, if that makes sense. So back to just this particular application is, all that would be required parking-wise for these four units in two duplex form would be those eight parking spaces. So they would have to fit the building on there, fit the parking on there, and then still be under all the other zoning ordinance requirements of maximum lot coverage. They'd have to meet their setbacks and those types of things.
Where's the ingress and egress going to be from the complex?
Again, this is stuff that's all decided kind of after. If the land use has changed, they would have to coordinate that with the Public Works Department as far as how that would, access would be done. Typically, it would either be only off of Nutwood, or a lot of times, they would use the alley as well. But those types of design considerations are done most of the time after the zoning ordinance, or, I'm sorry, the zoning has changed, and then they apply whatever regulations out of the ordinance is done. We did not get a concept plan with this particular application.
So the ingress egress that exists on each of those lots now would not remain if it was rezoned?
Could remain if it was rezoned, but as you see that, in this particular case, that yellow line kind of splits that driveway, if you're looking at the aerial. So they would have to work that out with the neighboring property, and then, once they do their design on this property, they would have to figure all of that out, and it would have to meet not only planning and zoning's requirements, but also any of the city ordinance's requirements too through Public Works or the Fire Department or whoever else would be involved in that process.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
The yellow box...
Hmm?
...leaves out portions of other properties that it includes. Does that make sense? Since it's cutting across property lines, is the portion that borders East 14th Avenue included in this, or are we dividing lots?
You'd be reconfiguring lots if you...
Does the applicant own all that property?
They would have to own all that property, obviously. You can't do something on somebody else's property. So if you look at the zoning request, the rezoning exhibit here that was done by Van Meter and Slavy, essentially, they would be reconfiguring all those light lines to just that yellow box.
And so, what happens to those portions of the property that are outside of the yellow box?
Typically, they will all get combined. One thing to keep in mind, combined into...
One lot.
One lot, or maybe two lots. So the portion outside the yellow may be one lot, and then everything in the yellow may be one lot.
Okay.
So typically, that's what would have to happen. That would be another requirement that we would ask for. But if you look at the existing zoning, and you can see, this is a kind of a unique situation. If you, I think, I don't know if you have the same page numbers we do, but page seven of nine of the staff report, it's the existing zoning map. It's hard to see on that aerial, but each one of those little small boxes there are individual lots. So you have some little itty-bitty landlocked pieces. So those are not portions of lots. Those are actually little bitty small lots that exist currently. Exactly.
Make sure I understand.
Yeah.
So if I look at this, what you're telling me is, there's eight... There's 10 pieces of property that are involved in all this? Or there are only six?
Six.
Okay.
So you have those portions, going back to the aerial, those portions that are, I guess, in the bottom half or the southern part of what's proposed there, those are actually four individual little small lots.
Eight lots in that particular square. Four that we're looking at rezoning and four that are outside of it.
Six in total that were rezoning.
So a portion of the property, of the other properties have got to be a part of what is being requested, or what is being requested, it is going to be built without these applicants being the owners of the surrounding property?
So, again, looking at the aerial photography...
Right.
What's proposed to be rezoned is the yellow box, which is roughly the current property lines of what the property owner owns. The confusing part with this one is there's a shared driveway there between those properties. So they, so the property line goes down the middle of that driveway. And so, they would have to work that out once they got to come to building it.
I think his question is about the four lots in the back that are being divided. He owns all of those, and he will own all the way down to East 14th as well.
Owns everything that's just in that yellow box. So the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 lots, he owns.
So the lots that are in the back don't go all the way to 14th, they're the little bitty chopped-up lots you were talking about?
Right. Those are actually eight, yes, those are actually eight individual, I see where you're going now. Those are actually eight individual lots, four of which the property owner owns, which goes along with the two longer rectangular...
So two of those lots are landlocked unless you're zoning it?
Well, the rezoning does not affect the property lines. The rezoning only affects the zone lines. The property would then have to be reconfigured or subdivided.
The two properties are landlocked currently, then?
Correct.
If you rezone it and he sets the property line separate, then you can get to the whole thing?
You will have to reconfigure the property lines, but that's a separate process.
I got you.
Yeah.
It doesn't have anything to do with planning and zoning?
It actually does, but it's just not, it's not, it's not, does not, it's not required to happen before rezoning happens. And it does not happen as a result of the rezoning.
I ask a question.
Just one question. I was going to ask why the Planning and Zoning Commission did not approve this particular request, but I think I know now. Hell, they were confused as I am. I don't know anything else to ask.
Okay. Let's see, did you have something?
Yeah. And I don't want to dwell on the previous vote, but apparently, this deadlock occurred because of something that was being talked about on Cherry Street, correct? What are the differences? Are these the same, or what are the differences? Because if you had a precedent that you disapproved something based on a similar, is it, what's the difference? The developer, the...
I guess I may have to maybe side with Mr. Denning a little bit on that. That would be the confusing part. The previous application was roughly the same. However, the only difference, there's two differences. One, the other one, the 203 Cherry Way, was actually future land use high-density residential, which would more lend itself to the RM4. This one actually was a little, a little less, trying to think of the proper term, but actually, it's mixed, it's mixed-use residential, which then is not exactly an automatic for high-density residential, if you will. That's the future land use. The second part of it is, this is a little less, a little smaller... The second part of it is, is this is a little less, a little smaller lots than, than, than the other ones, too, so.
So it would stand to reason that this would be more criticized than the one that was disapproved, correct? I mean, with what you just said.
I would, I would say you, you could argue that, yes.
This should have been disapproved unanimously, or, was the Cherry Lot disapproved unanimously, or what was the vote on it?
It was, it was unanimous, so there, we had eight planning commissioners there that night, and so it was a unanimous, I guess, a denial or a negative recommendation, which has since been pulled, that's why you don't, don't have that in front of you. Then this application came right after that.
And this has
Mm-hmm.
Has less leeway than the one previous that was disapproved?
Sure.
And this is more strict?
Sure. And then the other key difference, too, is we had at least, I believe it was two people in opposition of the first one, and then, as Mr. Harmon stated, we didn't have any opposition on this one, so.
And, and I could kind of see why. It's, it's pretty much all rental property down through there. I went there today and, and looked around, and there's, I don't know that there would be a, there, there may be, but, but it's gonna be few and far between, so, you know, it's probably not a motivating factor for somebody in a rent, you know, kind of a temporary housing situation to go and fight planning and zoning. But to me, if they're, you know, this is, this should be a harder, harder sell, and then you get tied where the first one is unanimously denied. I don't know how you could not, I just don't.
First time I've ever seen it.
If I even have the right property in mind, and I believe I do, Whiskey Run runs right through there. So is that, is that going to affect that at all? Well, it's, it's, it's right on the property line of the two that, so...
They're looking at that. Can I ask another question?
Yeah.
Ben, would, could they actually tear the houses down now and build two duplexes, or...
They, they would only be able to do one duplex, and that's why they were asking for the RM4, which, which, I guess, allows them to do the two duplexes, so they'd get four units instead of two.
Okay.
It's all about the density in this case.
Sure, sure, I can see that. I just, yeah, I'm gonna go back to, if the first one was denied, I don't know why, how you can have something under a little more scrutiny and okay it when, that would be a hard one. Because I don't see, variables are what? The location and the builders.
And then the opposition. But only on the one we're not discussing tonight.
Well, the applicant's looking for some direction here, and regardless of the vote, I think we oughta, we've been provided with the information from the minutes, and some clarification from Mr. Peterson. I think we need to, you know, planning and zoning is ultimately, in this case, the city's responsibility to, to approve or not approve, and regardless of the vote, four to four, two of the city appointees were for it, and one was not, that were there to vote. So, and, in order to keep it clean, you, I guess we can deny it if you choose not to vote for it, but I would make the motion to place on the agenda for us to vote now an approval, and it would require a second and a majority vote to put it on here, and then we would have to vote again. And of course, that vote doesn't count, because it's a two reading vote, the second vote's the one that counts.
Over that.
I guess I have a question before we, we get there, and it's more of a process question from planning and zoning. If four members were absent from planning and zoning, why is it not being resubmitted to planning and zoning for a decision by them? And this is more of a philosophical issue that I have with planning and zoning, that we routinely receive recommendations from them that we are told we can't do anything about, or to do something about it is complicated, you have to have hearings, and, and there's all kinds of rules surrounding that, but yet then we can have something sent to us where not all the members were present to have taken a vote, but yet then we either approve it, or have another hearing that brings about all that complicated rules. So, so why isn't planning and zoning taking it back with all members present and making a decision?
So the, the decision, the way, it's, it's a combination of what the Kentucky revised statutes, Chapter 100, allows the planning commission to do or not do, and the bylaws of the planning commission. So the process and the rules are set such that the majority of the planning commission of that particular night at that public hearing are the ones that hear it. As long as there's a quorum, the majority rules.
Understand that.
So, so that's it. So then, when the, the, barring it becoming a complete new application, only those eight that were there would be able to still rehear that same, same application, regardless if all twelve were there or not, the other four would not be able to vote, revote. It would only be that same eight. So, so that's one piece of it. Is that...
That answers my question.
But it looks to me as one of the people up here, and we appoint some of those people to the commission as well as the county. I am totally confused as to why there was no recommendation either way before being sent to this commission.
Sure. So part of those KRS statutes, so we had eight members present, and that, that was a quorum, so that, obviously, with an even number there, could, could lend itself to a tie vote. And, you know, I've been doing this nineteen years in three different communities, and this is the first one I've, I've seen as well. So understandably, there is, there is some confusion.
Legally, Mr. City Attorney, can we send it back down to the commission?
Uh, I'm not sure.
This is the first for us, one coming up this way.
Yeah, but the difference, but the difference is, they make recommendations, you make the final decision. I mean, I guess you can, I, I'm not too sure if we send it back, I guess, but the issue is, you know, as Ben just said, even if you send it back, it's gonna be the same eight. I think, if, when I read the minutes, they were asked that night, do you wish to vote a second time? And their response was no, that they wished to remain with the four to four. There's nothing in the statute says they have to make a recommendation. They just have to do the hearing, they're supposed to, but this one just ended up being a four to four tie.
Which is so contrary, that's my philosophical point. It's so contrary to what we're generally told in other pl- planning or zoning changes that come before the commission. We're told that we are the final decision, however, there, there are all these reasons we should never go against what planning and zoning tells us. But now...
I'm not sure I've ever told you that, but...
Well, I, I think in layman's terms, that's what's said. You, you know, probably not in legal terms, I would agree with you, you've never said that. But the idea is that if we're gonna go against what planning and zoning says, there, there's this complicated process to go through with it.
I'm not sure it's complicated, you just have to make findings contrary to what they found.
Right.
Ball moved. Did it be added to the agenda presently?
This is the approval of the rezoning to add to the agenda? Okay.
Second, or it dies for like a second.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion about adding it to the agenda? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
No.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Ordinance is for an approval of the, it's not a recommendation, but we need to make a finding of the facts that I need to read into the record, is that correct?
Yes, and I was gonna suggest that, too, which you may want to look at, the, the ordinance that we drafted, that did approve the rezoning, particularly the third paragraph that starts about after reviewing all the available information. I was getting ready to suggest, if you do vote to approve it, that you may want to make that part of your motion or approval process. It's in the actual ordinance that drafted, but may be good to make it orderly as well, The part that says, "After reviewing all the available information related to rezoning, including the summary of evidence presented to the planning commission and the board of commissioners, the testimony before the planning commission, the packet provided by the planning commission, the summary, minutes, and binding elements, the board of commissioners hereby finds that the proposed rezoning is in compliance with the Focus 2013 Comprehensive Plan is demonstrated by its compliance with the following objectives and action plan: LU hyphen 1.1.1, LU hyphen 1.1.2, LU hyphen 1.1.3, HN hyphen 1, and HN hyphen 1.3, and is further in compliance with the future land use map."
Motion.
So we have ordinance BG 2017-27, which is an ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing 0.2296 acre from RM3 multi-family residential to RM4 multi-family residential located at 1318 Nutwood Street, presently owned by Brian Todd Utley.
Since he's made a motion, can I say anything else? Second. Okay.
Second.
My question was about tabling it. I'm...
Can't table it unless it's on the floor, so you can move to table it now.
Well, that's, okay, okay. And, and it's not because I want to drag it out any longer. I, I understand, you know, there's a property owner that's involved in this, or a person who's interested in getting this zone, but given the confusion that I've had in just the discussion we've had so far, I would appreciate more time to be able to, um...
I can say one thing, four weeks is enough, the second reading's the only one that counts, and that's, we're not gonna have a July 4th meeting, so it'll be July 18th.
Okay.
In a month.
And, and, and that makes sense to me, but when I abstain from voting, that generally causes heartburn for people on the commission when I do that. So I was trying to avoid, yes, you in particular, I was trying to avoid creating angst amongst my colleagues by abstaining to vote, since I need more time to consider it. Provided, I'm, I'm prepared. If you, if you want to move forward, and I agree, four, four weeks is a long time to, to give it consideration, it's just an unusual circumstance.
Any other comments or questions? You've heard the presentation, and read the minutes and the record, and made the official motion, as Mr. Harmon read it.
Based on the findings.
Based on the findings. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
No.
Nash?
Stane.
Paragon?
No.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading on the 18th, and hopefully, everybody will have time to consider, drive by and consider the facts until then. Thank you all. All right, next is the approval of minutes from our regular meeting on June 6, 2017.
Number...
Second. Motion by Denning, second by Nash. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance BG 2017-23.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing 4.6431 acres from HB Highway Business to RM4 multi-family residential located at 2353 and 2361 Brusselsville Road, presently owned by Williams Family Limited Partnership II with John Groves and Shane Van Meter as contract vendor.
Ball moved.
Second.
Paragon, second by Nash. Second reading, is there any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance BG 2017-24.
Ordinance adopting annual city budget, ordinance adopting the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky annual operating budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017, and ending June 30, 2018, by estimating revenues and appropriating funds for operation of city government.
Ball moved.
Second.
Paragon, second by Williams. Fable, do you have any other comments on the budget? It's been well said in, in the past, any budget should provide for our ability to provide services now, and to handle any challenges that we may face in the immediate year to come, we think this document does that, without a tax increase, providing, in our opinion, in your opinion, hopefully, what this community needs for our citizens. And I want to thank the budget team, who, and all the employees and contract agencies who worked on this for, what, eight, four months, maybe? Something like that, so... Comments? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance BG 2017-25.
Ordinance relating to classification pay schedules, ordinance amending the classification pay schedules G for general classified, S for protective sworn, D for department head management, and U for unclassified part-time employees, and authorizing pay increases for fiscal year 2018.
Ball moved.
Second.
Paragon, second. Second reading. Again, any other comments or questions? Call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2017-106.
Municipal Order approving the promotion of Kimberly S. Ives to the position of Senior Office Associate in the Human Resources and Risk Management Department.
Ball moved.
Motion by Paragon, second by Nash, Mr. Fable. Thank you, Mayor. We have, as the commission knows, a career path program in the Public Works. We also have one for office associates in our company. We're here tonight to acknowledge the work of Kim Ives and Mike Grubbs, Personnel Department. She's been with us for, since 2011, has a great deal of experience. It's not easy to achieve the parameters needed to get this, and I think all of us, especially Michael and I, are very proud of Kim and the work she does. I believe she's here to hopefully accept your promotion. And so we can all better. Congratulations to you. Any other comments? Joe's looking at me.
I, I am so disappointed in Mike Grubbs. I tell you, I'll talk to you later, Mike.
Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2017-107.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Charles E. James Jr. to the position of custodian in the Parks and Recreation Department.
Ball moved.
Second.
Nash, second.
Thank you, Mayor. We have in, in the Park and Rec Department, custodians who perform the cleaning or repair of our various park and rec buildings. We're here tonight to ask you to hire Charles James to one of those vacant custodian positions. We, we publicly advertised, we had thirty-two applicants. Twelve were forwarded by the Personnel Department to the, to Brent and his staff. We interviewed four people, and from the distillation, we're proud to recommend Charles James. He has two years of relevant experience in the building arts. I, I believe that Mr. James is here.
Of course, congratulations to you. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2017-108.
Municipal Order authorizing insurance premium payments to the Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services for insurance coverages of general liability, public officials liability, law enforcement liability, automobile liability, and physical damage property and workers' compensation for fiscal year 2018.
Ball moved.
Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Williams, Mr. Fable.
For anyone who's been around the state and talked to our contemporaries in other cities, they, they proudly reference Bowling Green as one of the cities that does insurance safety well. A part of that relates to us having a full-time person, David Weisbro, who is there to make sure that our employees are safe and file the necessary paperwork. David also takes care of insurances, right now, it's currently provided at Kentucky League of Cities. We're here tonight to re-up, hopefully. It might be helpful if David could take us quickly around what we're voting on. Dave, can you come up, please?
For commission, to summarize very quickly, we've had our insurance through Kentucky League of Cities since 1996. We've been very pleased with the product. Despite increases in exposure, increased payroll, newer fleet, additional roads, and additional police officers, we're, we've managed to keep our insurance premiums pretty much the same as last year, actually. Actually, it's going down about $12,000 from what we submitted last year. Assisting in keeping our costs down is the continued experience modification rate for workers' comp, which is basically a measure of how well we're doing in the accident or the injury workers' comp scene. Our rate is point five-seven, which is down from point six-two last year, and we continue to be number one, or we continue to have the best record of all entities insured through Kentucky League of Cities, which I think there are over three hundred and forty. So we can brag that we're number one, and I've lost track of how many years in a row, so it doesn't really matter. But the city employees are doing a great job in keeping our costs down. I'm proud of that.
Brag, go ahead.
Yeah, well, I think I just did.
Nobody's counting the two.
Any questions?
Comments or questions for Mr. Weisbro?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make comment just for the sake of full disclosure. I'm on the Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Board, and so I just want to let you all know that.
Your largest customer?
I don't know that, but I can find out. I think we're up there.
What's your question?
Most important, I think. Most important.
Important customer, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2017-109.
Municipal order authorizing insurance premium payments to the Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services for insurance coverages of general liability, public officials' errors and omissions, buildings and property, and business automobile for the Convention Center Corporation for fiscal year 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Paragon, second.
Understanding that the Convention Center Board met it earlier to approve this, Michael's here if you would like to go over all the details. I know what's important to you all is that this is a hundred and thirty-five dollars less this year, so that's significant, and we're getting what we need to cover our important asset there. Again, Mike is here, if you have any questions.
Comments or questions?
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Order 2017-110.
Municipal order authorizing public safety software subscription services from N4 Public Sector Incorporated in the amount of sixty-four thousand eight hundred eighteen dollars and sixty-five cents for fiscal year 2018.
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Denning, Mr. Fibo.
Thank you, Mayor. This is one of the more important softwares that we use in the city. It helps to manage our 911 calls as well as our police documents. We have a maintenance contract with this company. It provides for a three percent increase over last year. We recommend approval. We find that reasonable. And Lynn Hartley's here, if you have any detailed questions about the software.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Order 2017-111.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2017-64 for Cisco Smart Net Annual Renewal from JBK Network Consulting Limited of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the amount of forty-two thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars.
Motion by Paragon, second by Williams, Mr. Fibo.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a smart net infrastructure system that provides for switches, firewalls, and wireless equipment to allow us to have a network that serves all the city. We have a maintenance contract with JBK. They were the lowest of four bidders. We recommend that we approve this contract. Lynn Hartley, our IT Director, is here, if you have any questions.
Comments or questions? Call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Order 2017-112.
Municipal order authorizing and approving a contract extension for concrete from Kenway Concrete of Kentucky LLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky at designated unit prices per cubic yard.
So moved.
Second.
Paragon, second by Williams, Mr. Fibo.
Thank you, Mayor. Our city uses concrete during all the applicable months that concrete can be poured. We go out to bid for that product. We're here tonight to ask you to renew for one more year our existing contract with Kenway Concrete of Kentucky. This will be at the same price it currently exists. Melissa Cancellors here, if you have any questions, but I thought and found it interesting that there's so many different varieties of concrete that I didn't know. So Melissa's here, if you have any questions.
Comments or questions? Call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Order 2017-113.
Municipal order approving the continuation of an agreement with Western Kentucky University for leaf composting services for fiscal year 2018 in the amount not to exceed forty-five thousand nine hundred dollars.
So moved.
By Williams, second by Nash, Mr. Fibo.
Thank you, Mayor. Every two years, we do a citizen survey of the type of services we provide to our citizens. One of the highest ranked of all the services we provide is the picking up of leaves. We pick those up with our staff. We take them out to the university who creates compost from that. They charge us forty-five thousand nine hundred dollars, and then we get to get rid of our leaves, and plus, we get to share twenty-five percent of the sales of compost, which is about twenty-five hundred dollars a year. We've been doing this since 1988, and I think it's a perfect example of how the university and city work meld our interests together to serve the citizens. So I'd recommend your approval.
Make sure our drainage system clear, too.
There's a, what the mayor's referring to, there is a, we're required under federal law to maintain our waterways and not add pollution to them. One of those things that could pollute is leaves and sediment that creates problems as well as clogs the storm drain system, so.
I would encourage all citizens, too, to read the municipal website about how the leaves should be placed at the curb and not actually out in the street. That prevents the stopping up of our wastewater systems and also potential accidents, so remember that, try to remember that.
Last year, I was going down the street, going down to Kroger's right beside PNC Bank. A person had put leaves blocking the whole lane going towards Kroger. In other words, you would have to stop to let somebody come by if someone was coming towards you. I called the police. Police went down there. I came back through from eating, came back through, and he was there knocking on the door, blocked the whole lane, stacked as high over top of the car. I don't understand why people do that. I mean, why put leaves out on the street?
They perceive that putting leaves on your grass will kill the grass.
Let it kill it.
Brent, who knows most things, told me it'll be stunted but won't be killed.
For bad.
Thanks.
All right, please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2017-114.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2017-61 for Sloan Convention Center Roof Replacement in Fiscal Year 2017 Capital Projects from Scott Murphy &amp; Daniel LLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand three hundred and ten dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Paragon, second.
Thank you, Mayor. Our convention center occupies a special niche market within the state of Kentucky and surrounding area. In order to maintain that place, we have to provide a product that is well-maintained. Earlier, the Convention Center Board met, and they approved a bid with Scott Murphy &amp; Daniel to spend about seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars to replace and repair the roof, doors, parking lot, and landscaping. At your courtesy, Mike Grubbs is here, if you'd like a better explanation. But for the, you had it at three, so, okay.
Questions, anything to add? Any questions? Call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Order 2017-115.
Municipal order approving appropriations for various city-created contract agencies for fiscal year 2018.
So moved.
Paragon, second by Nash.
During the budget process, we provide a certain amount of money as deemed necessary by the city commission for outside, non-city agency to do work of the city. Katie manages this for us, and I thought it'd be appropriate for her to briefly go over this year's allocation.
This is based on the recommendation provided at the May budget presentation, with one exception, there was a change based on a majority consensus of the board to increase the amount provided to the welfare center. So the total amount that we're looking at is one million three hundred and ninety-two thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars. That's for all eleven agencies that are proposed to receive funding. And again, that's the only change that was made from what was given at the budget presentation, and I did receive, a majority of you approved that, so that's why it's incorporated in this particular municipal order as it is.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Order 2017-116.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of a grant application to the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance for the purchase of bulletproof vests for the police department in the amount of twenty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a simple authorization by the commission for Nick Cook and the police department to submit an application to acquire approximately twenty-two thousand dollars for funds to purchase fifty-three bulletproof vests. So we do this almost every year. Nick is here, if you have any questions. Critical thing is no matches required, so that's nice.
Half of the vests.
Yeah, half of the vests.
Comments or questions?
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Order 2017-117.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of a 2017 grant application to the Georgia Pacific Bucket Brigade for the fire station equipment in the amount of up to five thousand five hundred dollars.
So moved.
Paragon, second.
Georgia Pacific provides grant funds to local fire departments that have a Georgia Pacific ancillary unit in their community. As we all know, Georgia Pacific is here allowing us to apply for their grant funds. We'd like to apply for fifty-five hundred dollars to buy a drying machine to dry our bunker or turnout gear, which helps reduce the exposure to carcinogens. Jason Saunders is here, if you'd like to hear more detailed explanation of this grant.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2017-1.
Municipal order authorizing the approval of a memorandum of agreement with the U.S. Department of the Army represented by the district engineer for a feasibility of water, supply, storage, reallocation study at Barren River Lake.
So moved.
Second.
By Williams, second. Paragon, Mr.
As the commission knows, we receive our water from the Barren River, which is an extension of Barren River Lake. We're here today to ask your approval to enter an agreement with the Corps of Engineers. It might be appropriate of Mike Gardner from BGMU came forward to explain the salient details of this request. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. DeFebbe, Mayor and Commissions. This is a project that never ends. We've been working on this for approximately thirteen years now. Essentially, we did a study back in the early 2000s, as Bowling Green and Warren County have grown, to look at alternative water supplies to supplement when we get into some of the severe drought conditions. We've gone through that multiple steps with Corps of Engineers. They're a large bureaucracy, and trying to figure out how to maneuver through that bureaucracy for something like this has taken a lot of time. We have completed a first-phase study. That was a water supply investigation. Essentially, that confirmed that there is water in the reservoir that is available for an allocation to us. There are several other entities, Scottsville and, sorry, I'm blank on the other ones. Yes, that already have allocations within the lake. So they completed that study about a year ago. On the heels of that, they have worked with us on a water supply storage reallocation study, which takes the next step to look at what the impacts will be to things like boat ramps and other recreational activities, agriculture, and those other entities around the lake to make sure there's no negative impact or that those impacts can be mitigated. So we are at that point with the Corps of Engineers to engage in this second-phase study to do that. The cost of this study was estimated by the Corps of Engineers at, sorry, I just lost on my page, two hundred and, right, what he said. And essentially, that will, there will be no cost to the city of Bowling Green or BGMU for that. There, excuse me, there will be a cost. It will be covered by a grant that we received from Kentucky Infrastructure Authority several years ago. We've been holding on to that grant to pay for this part of the study. We are also partnering with Warren County Water District because it will serve their customers in Warren County as well. So whatever the grant does not cover that we have will be covered by the Warren County Water District. So it is essentially a pass-through. BGMU will administer that and be responsible for making sure all those costs are covered.
Comments or questions?
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
I wanted to say, too, Mr. Mayor, while I had the podium, beautiful artwork you have here, and the red, white, and blue is scheduled to be painted starting in August.
I couldn't resist picking on Mark about that. I just couldn't resist.
I'm glad to see the water tower's still in the BGMU logo.
Municipal Order 2017-119.
Municipal order approving the appointment of Troy Brooks to the Bowling Green Historic Preservation Board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Paragon, second by Williams. This is a submission to take care of the resignation of Dave Southard. Mr. Brooks is a Bowling Green resident with a degree in history, and that's one of the requirements for the board to have some, there are specific requirements in our contract, and that meets those needs. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2017-26.
Ordinance relating to budget amendment. Ordinance approving amendment number three to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, annual operating budget for fiscal year 2017.
So moved.
Nash, Mr.?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the essential functions of the city commission is to approve amendments to the budget. Tonight, we're here to ask you to approve the third budget, third and final budget amendment. Would ask Jeff Mizel to answer any questions you may have. Generally, it's either a cleanup of line items or reallocation to needed line items based on savings and others. So, Jeff is here if you have any questions.
Comments or questions?
I may. It's just more of a recognition of the John O'Leary Kelly Trust Fund. As a parent of somebody who has had a child who's participated in Camp Happy Days, their continued support and donations to the city for that camp are really immeasurable as a parent and as a city commissioner, very well, very well appreciated and respected.
Call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Order 2017-120.
Municipal order approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement with SRP Enterprises LLC, doing business as The Nightcap, related to the lease of a portion of city sidewalk in front of 923 and 927 College Street.
So moved.
Motion by Paragon, second by Williams, Mr. DeFebbe.
With your all's courtesy, I would like to combine 19 and 20 for efficiency and have Gene Harmon explain both of the items.
Both of these kind continue the, I guess, trend downtown into sidewalk cafes. I think there's been some at similar locations before. 120 is The Nightcap. They're actually at 927 College, but my understanding is they have, I think, similar ownership at 923, so they've got permission to do it at 923 as well. If you look at the map, this one's a fairly tight fit. I think they can only go out a little over three feet because we need to keep the five feet of sidewalk beyond that for handicap accessibility, but they're aware of that. That's in the agreement. I think we've been told, we've kind of told them to put your tables, a little bit different, maybe one table with a chair at each end instead of going out to keep that five foot, so they're aware of that one. The second one's a little bit, a little bit different on 121. That's Rockies at 332 Main Avenue. Mayor shouldn't say it, but I don't think, I've ever been to Rockies, but I understand they may not sell food. What they've asked, they want to put a couple of benches out in front of their location. So, we have leased put on agenda a few to review to look at. I think there may be some options if that doesn't, that doesn't meet with your approval, but they've asked right now just to be able to put two benches out in front of their facility. And both of these, obviously, for the same reason. Both of these are licensed premises to be able to have alcohol out to go out the door into these leased areas. Those leased areas have to become part of their ABC licensed premise. Otherwise, it's considered drinking in public, and you can't do that. So, that's why these restaurants and places come to the city to lease the sidewalks so they can add that sidewalk to their leased premises.
Okay, so the vote now is on the one at The Nightcap at 923 and 927 College Street. Any comments? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-121.
Municipal order approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement with Acre LLC, doing business as Rockies, related to lease of a portion of city sidewalk in front of 332 Main Avenue.
Comments or questions? Motion by Paragon, second by Nash. Said something that caught my attention. You said there were options. I don't know what that means.
Well, I think when, when I talked to, I guess, the owner and manager of this one, I did explain that this is the first time I have seen anybody come in just with benches. Normally, it's tables and chairs because we want that. You know, all these others create the cafe-type look. The benches were a little bit different. I just mentioned to her that, you know, if this was not acceptable, you know, could she be open to the idea of tables and chairs as well? And she said she would, but I think her preference right now is just to do the two benches because I don't think they sell food.
No, it's a, I ask a question on this one. Do we have any other sort of nightclub venues that we allow sidewalk service currently? Like Dublin's or any of those? Do we?
Do we? Maybe Katie can answer. I can't remember who all we've done these with. There's been quite a few.
Yeah, we do have a lease agreement with Dublin's for their sidewalk. There's one for, I want to say Gerard's possibly. Patent pending use too. Of course, 440 does.
There are restaurants, full-service restaurants. I was just wondering.
But yes, with Dublin's, we do have a lease agreement.
Yeah, because Dublin's doesn't sell food either, correct?
I don't think so.
I don't think Dublin sells food either. Dr. Minter agrees.
They don't?
They do not sell food at Dublin's, but we have a lease agreement for the sidewalk with them. I was just seeing if we have done this for anybody in the past, something similar.
Everybody else around the square has got some form of seating. I mean, was bench a go hard?
Now, the main thing I just want to point out the difference in this one is the fact that they wanted benches and not tables and chairs.
Questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, that's the last item on the agenda. We have a public comments section if anybody would like to step forward. Dan, are you up? Come ahead.
Y'all hear me okay? Is that too loud?
Give us your name and address for the record.
All right. My name is Fabian Alvarez, and I live at 1475 Southern Sky Circle, and I'm here to speak and support the fairness ordinance. I want to begin by thanking you. These meetings do go a long time, so thank you for your time. And I want to share my perspective, perhaps something you may not have heard before. I'm not sure. One of someone who used to be, well, quite frankly, afraid of anyone who was not heterosexual, put it that way. And I want to let you know that while I don't side with you now, at one point in my life, when I was younger, I likely would have. And I think I understand perhaps where some of you are right now. I grew up in a small West Texas town and was the youngest of 18 children. Son of a cotton farmer, devout Catholic. Went to church twice a week, prayed the rosary every night at 9:00 PM. When I was 18, I left home to go to college, and I had to get a job because I was the son of a poor cotton farmer, and I had to pay for my own education. One of the first jobs I had was the third shift at a convenience store chain. And a young man named Greg was in charge of training me. And I was replacing his shift. He was going from the night shift to the day shift. Greg was gay, and I was afraid of him, quite frankly. He was the first openly gay person I had ever met. And I thought about leaving that job because I strongly disapproved of his being gay. And, you know, frankly, I needed the money. And I'll say, in the time that I spent with him and the days, however many days it took to train me and however many overlapping 30 minutes of our shifts that we had, I got to know Greg a little bit better. And I learned that we had a lot of commonality, a lot of common interests, that he had many of the same fears and hopes that I had, and that he had pet spills, brothers, sisters, and friends, some of whom I met when they came by the store to say hi to him. And they were good people, and that's, that's what it is. They were just people like me and like you. And then I went off to graduate school, and in graduate school, I got to meet other people who were unlike me, people of different religions, different ideologies, and I had the same realization about them that I had about Greg, and that is that they were just people like me and like you. And since then, I've learned that some of my family and childhood friends are gay or lesbian, and that really changed things for me because it hit home. Yet, even then, I was anxious. And I was anxious because I supported them, but I was afraid of what people would think about me coming out as someone who supports this community, having been raised Catholic, you know. I was afraid that my siblings would not want to be around me, that my friends would think I was crazy, or even that the church would shun me. And I get it. And what I mean by I get it is I understand what it's like to be socially conservative and how difficult it is to look inward and grapple with some core values. But what it took for me was getting to know someone for who they are as a person, as a person who has a family, who has friends, bills, hopes and fears.
Your time is expired.
And just like me, they're a person and just like you. And they deserve the same rights and protections of the law. So, I ask you to put the fairness ordinance back on the agenda and pass it immediately. Thank you.
My name is Summer Bolton, and I live at 1323 East 15th Avenue in Bowling Green. I am here today to ask you to pass a fairness, fairness ordinance on behalf of my father, my family, and everyone else who lives with the effects of discrimination in our city. My father owned a business in Kentucky. He was lucky enough to have found a niche within the business, or within his industry. Within this niche, his company rose to the top, and we're the most successful company in the state of Kentucky within their industry with clients statewide and nationwide. Dad was also appointed to sit on many state boards where he advocated for his clients' rights. Because of his success in business, dad put four kids through college, one who went on to medical school, and still had two more kids at home under the age of 18. Had a beautiful house and was able to travel for weeks at a time around the world. One day, someone told one of my father's employees that he was a gay man. The employee then went on and told everything she'd learned about my father to his business partner, who responded by dissolving their business partnership while my father was out of the country for three weeks. Dad soon discovered what it meant to have no legal recourse to fight against the discrimination he was suffering. My father's life was completely turned upside down. His legal action to fight this was not successful because gay people have no legal protections in Bowling Green, and he lost the business he had built and his comfortable life. All of his children now had to borrow money for their educations. He had to sell his home, his cars, and his life was very different from that point on. Granted, he's back on his feet now and after more than 10 years. Bowling Green's a small town. Many of you may know him because you went to high school with him, or you may know one of us, his six children. But because of your insensitivity, your failure to do the right thing, your failure to pass an ordinance that would protect people from discrimination and would protect their jobs, my father lost his lifestyle and the ability to provide for his family. The worst part for him during all of this was not that his monetary wealth disappeared abruptly. It was that he could no longer give us, his kids, the opportunities he had before. As a parent, that was heartbreaking and frustrating to know that he was powerless, forced to live in a state of limbo because people like you don't see it fit to pass a fairness ordinance. Although my family recovered, not everyone in the LGBTQ community has been so lucky, and the pain of discrimination never goes away. LGBTQ community members are valued members of our society. They're your neighbors. They stand behind you in line at Kroger, and they attend church with you. How can this city commission as a whole continue to deny the LGBTQ community the respect and dignity they deserve simply because you are afraid or you don't understand? By denying this ordinance, you are denying good people their right to be secure financially and work without having to live on the edge of their seat simply because of who they love. Please remember, you're not only punishing them, you're punishing their families, friends, and loved ones. I urge you to pass the ordinance.
Please, your time is expired.
My name is Jennifer Moreland. Okay. I have two issues I want to talk about. One issue is, okay, a small business plan, somebody, Paducah. Paducah is a city, and what they have is they have a small business grant. And what it does, it helps a small business get started, correct? Well, in this, in this city, they don't have anything like that. They don't have anything to help small businesses grow. They don't have anything. They have the small business thing, but that's all they do. They don't give out grants. They don't do anything. And the reason why is they don't have the money to do it. Now, the money that you have left over, you could use that, like $5,000, to give to a eligible business to improve, to make businesses grow. And you can do that, you know? And I, I know I'm asking a lot, but it's just like, it's like establishing a business, and why don't you do it? Because it's not your obligation? Well, and when you become, when you became city commissioners, wasn't your obligation to help this area? And the same is the Fairness Act. It's like, why aren't you passing it? And if you don't believe in it, then why don't, why don't you prove to everybody in this area that being gay is wrong? By doing a study at Western? Are you scared? Is that what's going on? Are you scared to know the truth? Then people are born gay? Now, this, you might be prejudiced against me because I'm for the Fairness Act, but don't look at what I'm for. Look at the fact, it's a great idea to help small businesses, you know? And the fact is, businesses need to grow, to prosper, to make cities grow. And Paducah knows how to do it. So, why aren't you doing the same thing that Paducah is doing and step up and say, "That's a good idea"? Just because I'm for the Fairness Act? Is that what you're saying?
City manager, do we not have an agreement with Western Kentucky University for our small business program? And do we not provide funds through the Housing Authority of Bowling Green and our Western Kentucky University for that purpose?
We haven't passed. None this year's.
We did not have it in this year's.
Cut out at the retreat.
Well, we have in the past, so there, for many years prior to, we've always had an agreement through Western and the Housing Authority for small business startups. So, that is a moot issue, and we hear it every week. Is it not a moot issue?
No, actually, it's not.
Beg your pardon?
It's no longer, it's no longer, it's no longer, you're not doing the funding at all. You're cutting the funding for small businesses, and that's wrong. And on top of it, you're not even helping small businesses grow. All you're doing is, you're not helping the community. Why aren't you helping the community? You were put on this, you won the city's business, okay? And you, you're, you said you would help the community. You said you would help the community, and you're not helping the community. Help the community, help the small businesses, you know? Help them grow and prosper.
And adjutant? Commissioner Nash, can you take the gavel away from the mayor so he doesn't bang it too soon?
My name is Dan Myers. I live at 02 Parkway Street. If you don't know, it's on the other side of Reservoir Hill Park. Let me start by thanking the city commission for funneling the federal funds to my neighborhood. The first neighborhood that you targeted for, for both sidewalks and for the neighborhood grants have come to my neighborhood, so I appreciate that. I thought that it was Nick's way of apologizing for kicking me off of the citizen review board that you did away with, and I'm very glad I don't have to deal with that, and you folks do that anymore. I'm here today to talk primarily about RFP 2017-53, the sale and development of 800 Park Street, excuse me, High Street, your plan to take the green out of Bowling Green. I'm going to read my comments because sometimes I end up saying things I regret, so I'm going to try to stick to my script. Okay. I'm concerned the city's considering selling parkland and reducing the amount of green space in the city center. With the proposal that you have before you, the RFP, we're going to lose some green space in the center of the city. We're going to lose some old growth trees. Once the green space is gone, it's gone forever, and we can't replace it. While it may not be directly used by the members of the city commission, that area, and I will call it Reservoir Hill Park because of communication that we received from the city said a portion of Reservoir Hill Park, that portion of the park is used frequently. It's kind of the kiddie hill where youngsters go and sled, the ones that shouldn't go to the top of the hill. It's used by people in the neighborhood who walk their dogs. It's used by children in the neighborhood whose parents aren't comfortable with them going all the way up to the top of the hill to play with their dogs. So, it is used. So, it is used. It's not just something that we mow and maintain. It has had use. Since I've lived in my house, which is thirty-something years, it's pretty much been considered a park. Development that you are considering, and I understand that it isn't on the agenda at this time, but the, the development is going to put three homes on .69 acres. The land size is much smaller than any of the other lots in the neighborhood. The houses will take up a significantly larger portion of the land, so there'll be less yard, less space, and it just doesn't fit with the neighborhood. Fronting Cherry Street's a problem, and that's the proposal that we see. Cherry Street's very busy. When we put the sidewalks in, it seems, and I may be wrong, it seems that the, the space on Cherry Street kind of diminished, so it's very difficult to navigate, especially in the morning and afternoon with people using it as a thoroughfare. Mayor Wilkinson brought to the attention of the commission the sale of the land at the corner of High Street and Parkway. It hasn't been developed, and at least a portion of that land right on the corner was to be maintained still as, as park space and/or green space. I may be biased, since my land is going to look directly into that space, and as the proposal that was shared with us stands, I will be looking directly into the rear of someone's home. Even with that, I do not believe that I would ever support the City Commission selling parkland or green space in the center of the city. I'm kind of saddened that we were not contacted directly about this. The way we found out about it is when a developer approached a neighbor and said, "We're considering doing this, and we want to buy some of your land." I would like to invite the Board of Commissioners to come to the neighborhood, similar to when you did the neighborhood strolls, and meet with the neighbors in the neighborhood and understand what this proposal's going to do. It's a weird bird in the neighborhood, at least that area's zone RM2, so there are fewer hoops that the developer would have to jump through, less recourse that the neighbors have. I'm not alone in my concerns. I know that the Bowling Green Daily News has contacted several of our neighbors to ask about this proposal. It may have been sparked by my letter to the editor, and it may have been sparked by other people's comments along the way. I will attend the open house Thursday and listen to what the developer has. I have spoken with, with Mr. Childers on several occasions, and we're trying to get through all of this in a nice manner. Let's keep Bowling Green green, and let's not be, come Bowling not so green. I thank you for your time, and I think when it gets to the City Commission, if it gets there, it's a bad idea. Yes, sir.
You got a letter in the mail from Neighborhood and Community Services for the open house hearing.
Right.
Okay. Other people in your neighborhood got that information too?
Eventually, yes, sir.
Okay.
My, mine was a...
You understand, no decision's been made. We put, he did a good job over on 10th Street and Park Street around our NCS building. Said something about wanting to do that, but when we did the RFP, it was, what are you looking, what are you looking to do? And that's, we haven't, haven't seen that to know what he's going to do yet. So, this is the opportunity to make your, now, I won't be there Thursday night, I'm in Frankfurt, so.
I'll let you know what I think after that meeting.
I know you will.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. I'm sorry, anybody have any questions for Dan? All right. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, our next scheduled meeting is July the 18th. We won't meet on the 4th of July, obviously a national federal holiday, so thank you for tuning in.